Good evening.
Who's saying that? Is that me echoing?
Is our staff even going to be quiet?
Hello?
This thing.
Now you're in the chapel, everybody.
Hi. Good evening. Welcome to the Larksboro City Council meeting. It is May the 15th at 6:30. And Jamie, our city clerk, can you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harrow?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Council Mayor Hillmer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chu?
Here.
And Mayor Morrison?
Here. Thank you. If you're able to, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. So do we have any public comment? A comment that's not on the agenda for tonight? Okay, come on up. We are here to listen.
I just wanted to make it known that we are, that we, the residents at Marin Park are...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You need to identify yourself and your residence. And if you can put the mic closer to your mouth.
Is that better?
Much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Well done.
My name is Annie Harrison, and I live in Greenbree in the Marin Park Mobile Home Community. I submitted the other day a, to the district attorney, a mediation request, and I just wanted to share a couple of the things that I wrote on there. And that was that the rent for my mobile home has increased at an alarming rate since September 2017. We are, in fact, at the Mobile Home Park, living in a low-income housing and populated by many retirees. Our neighborhood consists of adjacent freeway with its noise pollution, a cement plant spewing persistent unhealthy dust in the air, and a marsh with a view of the prison. We are not living in a Palm Line community that offers a clubhouse, gym, or golf and tennis facilities. I am 67 years old, live on a fixed income, and somewhat physically limited with regards to finding employment. And so this has come as a great shock to me that they have raised our rent now 10 percent two times in a row. I did some calculations, and I found that even after a 5 percent rent, if we signed the lease they want us to sign now, in the next five-year period, I'll be paying $6,360 more. Or if we don't sign the lease, we're probably going to be assessed the 10 percent. And if so, that is $8,220 more than a simple 5 percent increase would be over five years. That's what I am going to mention in mediation, that I would like a reasonable 3 to 5 percent increase. And otherwise, I too will be driven out of a home that I love. Many of our residents have had to take in roommates because they can't afford this increase. Best-case scenario is that we would like to have Marin Park regulated under arrest control. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else?
I have a guest.
Good morning. Good afternoon. My name is Sherri Safapu, and I own 54 Walnut Avenue. And I have an issue with the city of Larksboro and my neighbor. In 2000, I asked my agent to buy me a house so I can get the exit to paradise. So each time, after hard-working days, I can go home to paradise. So 2004, I bought my house. I cleaned up. It was really bad. The neighborhood was really bad. So as soon as I started cleaning, everybody did. Good for us. In 2008, I divorced my ex. He came to my house. He put the whole 800 holes in my house. I had to hire the contractor to do it. I hired the architect and contractor. The contractor took my money and left, and we had to escort the contractor out of my house by police. And I did not fix everything in the house. So the tax people say, okay, because a lot of work is unfinished, so you don't have to do that. As soon as you finish, we can start taxing you for the new home. Okay. In 2008, I start, I paid $15,000 to change my fence. And two of the representatives of the Larksboro City, they came, and their name is in there. They retired. So they came, oh, you know, you cannot do that. Now you changed the fence. You have to go back up. I said, well, if I do that, what do I get? They said, oh, you can, that's the idea they gave me. You can convert the garage, and you can put the two windows, and then you can put four cars here. So I back up, and I gifted the city two parking spaces, which, okay. And then I didn't finish the job. So now, I'm asking the city, honor your people who promised me to give me my garage, to convert my garage. This is one. The second is, because the contractor ruined my house, now nobody buy it. Because it's not enough living room, it's not enough dining room, it's not enough bathroom.
Yes, yes.
All right. So now, let me tell you. I'm an educator. I develop, I'm a create violent and suicide prevention. And let me tell you, these people, they are awesome. But if it's good for them, they hassle me, they attack me. So anyway, I find that my neighbors are white supremacy. The front, the left, right. So I said, okay, I don't want to open up my door. You know, I live, I really live well. So I rented my house. They, I'm very sorry, they shit on my premises, they broke my fence to peek on us. And now, okay, I rented to the living, you know, the lady who are sober?
Yes, yes.
And they're living there. Okay. They have a license, they have everything.
Right.
They are very quiet, very nice people. I go in there, I make sure everything is good in the neighborhood. And I don't want to stay here. So I have two choices. One, to fix the house, get my profit, get out. Or two, I be a Mother Teresa. I bring all people, nobody wants it. I host in my house. And that's...
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. But I want to mention to that, these are the problem, is not a problem anymore. These are end result of the problem.
Okay.
I really appreciate it.
And thank you.
Please read.
Yes, we will read, and I thank you for voicing your opinions and your story. Thank you for that.
Please. Appreciate it.
All right. Nice to meet you. Do we have anybody else? Okay, I'm going to bring it to close a public comment, and we don't have any presentations or proclamations. I thought you were going to, yes, Larry?
Yeah, actually, because I didn't get it in on time on Friday, I actually have an urgency item I'd like to ask the council to consider. And it is in the form of a mayoral proclamation, and it is under U.S. Senate Bill 1050, where Chinese-American World War II veterans are going to be honored with the Congressional Gold Medal. And I had provided, I thought, a summary of the proclamation. Was that distributed to the council?
It was, yes.
So it is stating, in effect, that the city of Larksboro would be offering its congratulations to Chinese-American veterans of World War II for their service. And this presentation will be made on Memorial Day, which is why it's now an urgency item.
Yeah.
So I don't know how to make the motion, because I don't have anything specific in front of me.
I don't think we need to make a motion, Larry.
I just, I...
I think that since it's a mayoral proclamation, as long, that this is something that the mayor can do independently.
Right.
It doesn't require council action if the mayor is in agreement with it. But if you would like to add it to the agenda, then it could be added as consent item 4.8, and just needs a motion that the need for action came to attention after the agenda was posted, and that because it's happening on Memorial Day, that the council won't have a chance to take it up before its next regularity.
Or we don't have to do that?
I think that since it's a proclamation, that the mayor has the authority to just...
Right. I just think our...
If you wanted council action on it, you could do it that way. But if it's a mayoral proclamation, the mayor can do it independently.
Okay. Yeah, I've seen other mayoral proclamations on our consent agenda, and I know I've issued some on my own without council consent, so I wasn't sure where our practice had been moving.
And that's why I say, if you wanted the council's support, there's a way to add it to the agenda. But if you're okay with just having the mayor do it, then I don't think it requires council action.
Okay. I'm actually fine with having the mayor do it if there's no objections from the council.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Larry, for bringing it to our attention. I'm very honored to sign that.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Would anybody on the council like to remove anything from the consent calendar?
No.
I see none. I'll open it to the public. Anybody from the public like to pull anything from the consent calendar? I see none. I'll bring it back to the council. May I have a motion for an approval?
I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
And how about a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I see none. Thank you. Now we have a city manager's oral report. Dan Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. A couple of items for you first. Very excited to be putting the interest that we're earning off of the donation from the Zimmer Family Trust to work. And this year, we've accumulated sufficient interest that we're able to re-carpet the library, which is really exciting, because the library had definitely some spots there where it was looking a little threadbare. So there is going to be a closure, unfortunately, while the carpet's being installed. So from May 16 to May 28, the library will be closed. That's been posted on signs posted on our websites. Just wanted to reiterate that message here, and when we reopen, we'll have lovely new carpet for everybody to enjoy. I also wanted to remind the council and the residents that while we are trying our best to tell folks when we're going to pave roads, particularly during the year we're going to pave them, like right now, it's a fluid process. For example, we've lost a day today because it's raining, so we have to adjust the schedule. We probably were too specific in the information we were putting on our website, where we were projecting dates fairly specifically for roads. We've gone back now and are trying to broaden that language and encouraging folks to know that they're in a particular window of time, but the trigger is a 72-hour notice that they'll receive from the contractor, saying, we're definitely going to be here 72 hours from now. So keep monitoring our website. Our website's trying to give you a best estimate of when we're going to be there. We think it's fairly accurate, but when we have days like today, we have to adjust the schedule. You'll want to keep checking there if you know your road's up for paving this year, and then be on the lookout for the 72-hour notice. So those are my messages for you, Madam.
Great. Any questions for Dan? Great. Thanks, Dan. All right, we're going to bring it to the council members. Any reports from the council members? I see none.
I do.
You do? Great.
No, I don't have one.
I have one, too.
Okay. Catherine?
So today, I visited with the Larksboro Community Foundation's board, and we went over some ideas for how they can continue to be very supportive of Larksboro's events and community meetings and community activities. And I think they're really growing into a mature organization. I was really pleased to be able to be the liaison with them and share some ideas about how they can further enhance the community. So look forward to some things they're going to be doing this year. Second thing is, I'm now on the Marin Ready Together group that Katie Rice, Supervisor Rice, has put together, and there's a representative from every city and town on it. Our city manager sits on the second committee, which is some of the city managers and the county administrator, looking at wildland fire prevention. We met yesterday, and part of what our conversation is, is how all of our cities and towns and councils can support the Marin County Fire Chiefs Association in their rollout of their six-point plan, which we're all going to hear about as far as wildfire prevention and education of the community. And it's terrific to see a representative of every city and town in this meeting with the fire chiefs representative to really get on board policy-wise, to make sure we're all adopting very similar policies to help each other out. On that note, you probably got your notification from Central Marin Fire about getting your home prepared for the upcoming property inspections that will be going on this summer from our Central Marin Fire. And if you didn't get it, it's all online at Firesafe Marin. And my last comment is that Firesafe Marin, which is a large nonprofit that does a lot of fire prevention and fire safety policymaking in Marin, has asked me to join their board. So I've joined their board. It is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), but it has representation on it of many different agencies, not just fire, but public safety, the parks, the recreation, and the large landowners in Marin. So expect to see a lot happening this year to prepare us for the wildland fire that is going to happen in California. We just don't know when or where, but it's going to happen. Lastly, there was a big discussion about making sure that our community is well aware about PG&E's plans to shut down power. And it will happen in Marin sometime this summer. They guarantee it to some of us. And please go on the PG&E website to learn about how to further prepare. They will be giving notification, hopefully, but they will be, they are planning on shutting down power. And you'll hear more of, we roll that out. But the Marin Ready Together group is really going to try to push out messaging along with PG&E, that people prepare for up to a five-day power shutdown if the conditions are right. And the conditions are likely to be right as the wildland fire season hits. So you can learn more about that on the PG&E website.
Just ask a question.
Of course.
When you say PG&E is planning to do power outage, are they planning to do that as a test of their practices and procedures?
No.
Or they're just, they're just expecting a fire?
They're, no, not a fire. It's a preventative measure. They have tier one to tier two and tier three. And if you might have seen the breaking news this afternoon, Cal Fire has now said PG&E was responsible for the campfire by their power lines. And so they are really getting serious about...
I'm sure the lawyers love that.
Preventatively shutting power to high-hazard fire zones or areas that they determine are going to be danger, potential danger zones by their own weather service and their own configuration of their utility supplies that they have, their equipment. But it will, it's going to happen in California, and we just have to be prepared that it could happen this summer or this fall here in Marin, because we are, service area is PG&E, so...
It's perfect timing, Catherine, and thank you so much. Larksboro is hosting all the mayors and council members in June, and that's what we're going to talk about. We've got the county fire chief coming along, yep, along with the PG&E representative, so...
Great.
We have lots of questions for him. So thank you.
Yeah.
Dan, Hillmer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have more good news.
Smart train?
Regarding the smart train. I was being ironic. There are two important street closures coming up at the beginning of the month of June due to the construction work in building the Larksboro extension. The first closure is on June 1 and June 2 at Second Street at Tamalpais Avenue and Heatherton Street in San Rafael. It's just on the weekend. And the second closure will be the following weekend of June 8 and 9. And this is the area between Second and Third. They're going to do the work, it'll begin at 8:00 p.m. Friday night of those weekends and be completed before Monday's commute reopening by 4:00 a.m. The closure will also result in the closure of the San Rafael Smart Station, but they will be running a bus bridge between the Civic Center and the San Rafael Transit Center and directly to the ferry terminal during those periods for commuters. So I just wanted to make those announcements.
Right.
And those will be repeated through the television and other media.
Great. Thanks, Dan. It's important to know. All right. Anyone else? We're done? All right. We'll move on to public hearing. 7.1, introduce first reading of ordinance number 1040, amending chapters 1.01 and 9.24 of the Larksboro Municipal Code to modify provisions related to enforcement of the Municipal Code and other city laws. May we have a staff report, please? Hi, Neil?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Morrison, and members of the city council. Bear with me, I'm getting past a cold I had from a vacation last week, so, but feeling much better. Just clearing out.
Vacation and got a cold?
Yeah.
Oh. Nope.
That happens sometimes. Okay, what we brought before you tonight are amendments to the Municipal Code that we have actually been working on with the city attorney for a bit of time now, kind of getting back to it and getting some details worked out, and also working with Chief Norton on addressing some amendments that could help assist their officers as well in enforcing the code when needed. And this is ultimately to help make for a more effective code enforcement process, more effective and efficient for the city. So primarily, there are four sort of overriding changes that we're doing here. One is we're deleting portions of chapter 1.01, an older chapter that really established some of the first code enforcement language, and consolidating that into the Code Enforcement Procedures and Penalties chapter in chapter 9.24. So this will eliminate some internal conflicts and unify all the code enforcement procedures and penalties into one section of the code. The amendments also allow for criminal enforcement of code violations, that is enforcement by the police department, to be enforced either as infractions or misdemeanors. The code currently applies misdemeanor penalties to a number of violations, violations of a number of sections in the code. And that's actually rather heavy-handed and also onerous. Misdemeanors are difficult to enforce or to administer. The police rarely seek to arrest through misdemeanor charges. So a more practical approach is the ability to cite for violations of the code as an infraction. So this is something the city attorney and the chief of police had agreed was a smart approach for those types of violations that the police occasionally need to enforce. Another is to establish an administrative citation procedure, and this is a procedure that allows staff to issue citations in certain situations of noncompliance. Again, there's always an investigation of a complaint and a chance through verbal and written warnings to achieve compliance. In this case, it's, that's even formalized through what's called a pre-citation notice. If a person eventually does not comply and is cited, they may request a hearing. If, and in order to request a hearing, their fine is held in abeyance. And at that point, we would identify, and we would have prepared ahead of time, a hearing officer, someone who is a third party to the city, not part of the planning and building staff, certainly. And it would not be the city council. These would be, this would be a process of administering fines that would, then, that hearing officer's decision would be appealable to the courts. The hearing officer may either uphold the city's citation or decide that it's not a violation and waive. And then the other final matter is, we've reorganized the section on administrative enforcement of violations, and this is essentially the nuisance abatement procedure that you are a little familiar with, where previously it was spread through several sections within 92.24. It was a little difficult to follow, and so we've unified the procedures under, and the remedies, identified the various optional remedies under one section. So this is easier for the public and the decision-makers to follow. It's easier for staff to implement the way it's read. It's essentially the same process, but just reads a bit cleaner. So that's the essence of the changes we're proposing. Again, I'd like to reassure staff continues to conduct code enforcement largely on a complaint basis. Our priorities are life safety code matters and significant public nuisances that affect the greater community first, and also urgent matters. If there's construction or trees coming down at that time, we do have a part-time code enforcement officer, and that has been helpful in doing some ready response to violation complaints. But again, our primary goal is to always work with residents, property owners and business owners, to achieve compliance through voluntary measures. These fines and hearings that are outlined here are really just tools of a last resort. So we've had our code enforcement officer in place since January. We haven't had any citation, any types of citations or hearings issued at this point. We've resolved several older matters of code enforcement. We've addressed a number of current complaints and have generally are achieving correction through outreach and verbal and preliminary notification. So with me, Sky Woodruff actually was largely the architect of the ordinance, and so if you have any questions, he's also available to help answer. And with that, we recommend that the city council waive first reading and move to continue for second reading and adoption of the ordinance. Do you have any questions of staff?
Thanks, Neil. Any questions? Kevin?
Thank you, Nick. That's very helpful, and this is, I think, good cleanup of the code. I just had a question about the status of the hearing officer for the new provisions that require or call for the use of a hearing officer to adjudicate disputes about enforcement. What's the status, I mean, is that going to be a person employed by the city? Is there going to be a contractor? How does the city go about evaluating qualifications and then setting up arrangements with a person who plays that role?
What we'll be doing is looking at options for a contractor, because there are persons who do play that role, and they have done that, they've done that for other cities, both in Marin County and around Bay Area, and typically it's someone who may be in a position as a sort of a mediator or an attorney who's, has familiarity with municipal law or someone who's worked in administration, maybe retired. There are some names out there who've done, who do have served in that role. And so a contract position is desirable. It doesn't necessarily have to be that, but ideally, it would be somebody who doesn't work within the confines of the department and at least works outside of the department, because the decision that's made ideally is clearly unbiased, because that's a decision that would then, could then be appealed to the courts. So it may depend upon the weight of the matter at hand, but I think generally, if we can have one or two people signed up as a contract for that position and ready to go, that would be the ideal.
And they'd just be available, you know, on-call for a particular matter?
On-call, correct, yeah.
That sounds fine. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Great. Larry?
Yeah. We have a couple ordinances, specifically Heritage Tree and Social Host, where the penalties are a different schedule than what's outlined here. How is that resolved, or will that be rolled up into this?
They don't have Sky.
Those would still operate independently. I mean, to the extent that they, a violation of either one of them would constitute, also constitute a violation of the Municipal Code, enforcement could be done through this proposed new... new Chapter 9.24. But, like, to use as an example, the Heritage Tree ordinance, that has some very specific penalty provisions in it that were crafted to address the community loss from the improper removal of a heritage tree. And so there would be the option to use these tools, but they would not prevent the imposition of the penalties that are outlined in the Heritage Tree chapter itself.
Could somebody cite this and say that, "Well, it says that fines are lower here, so that's what I'm going to pay"?
No, we've included language that says that it's not the exclusive means of enforcement. So it would not, so while we didn't directly address Social Host or Heritage Tree, the catch-all language would allow for us to say, "No, we're proposing to use the penalties under the Heritage Tree ordinance."
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? All right, I see none. I'll open it to the public. It'll be from the public, have any questions regarding 7.1. Come on up, James.
James Holmes at Larkspur. I think it's a good job, and I'm glad Neil is here, because my question is, how would this relate to issues involving planning? Failure to comply with the planning permits. I noticed that there is language in 9.24.030A that I think this technically would apply to the violation of permits issued by the planning commission or project approvals. However, the fines are very, very low relative to the kinds of money that you're talking about in these situations. And it occurs to me that sometimes there are situations in the planning process where someone exceeds a requirement, and it's not so bad as to force them to undo it, but on the other hand, they ought to have their hands slapped pretty hard for that. In other words, a kind of a middle ground. And I wonder if this would, I think a particular case over in Heather Gardens recently, but I could provide other examples. But in any event, I wonder, I wonder if this would give adequate, the adequate way to deal with violations of, fines of violations of project approvals where you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. Because I, I mean, if you're talking about $200 or $300 fines, I think people will just pay it and go on.
Neil, do you want to answer, or Sky?
Let me, I'll kind of start with my impression or response, and then I'll let Sky sort of elucidate on that. In the planning process, there's a number of remedies, and particularly one is, if the permit, if they're working out of permit, that permit's going to get, there's going to be a stop work. There's a number of remedies if, that we're talking about a construction project where the work is stopped. And then, doing corrective measures requires amending a permit, and the cost of that permit has a penalty fee to it, so there's disincentives to not complying with a permit. If there, if the violation is so egregious and we are not, we're not establishing compliance through the permitting process, then these are tools that are available, whether it might be administrative fines as a starting point, and then going towards either a legal process or full nuisance abatement hearing before the council. The nuisance abatement hearing process is really one that gives the opportunity for a public, if this involves complaints from the public and so on, an opportunity for public involvement in assessing the severity of the violation and the impact and so on. So there are some, there are some situations that really may call for more of a administrative hearing or administrative nuisance abatement process, but hopefully most of this, most of these violations can be done through either, if necessary, administrative citations and/or then the next step is legal.
Great. Thanks, Neil. Sky, do you?
I'll take it from there.
Yeah, let me add a couple things. So the fee amounts that are listed here are actually not new. These are the same ones that are already in the municipal code. And to a significant degree, they're limited by state law. So we've basically, where that's the case, we have, we have included the maximum that state law permits. But I think, as Neil discussed in his initial report, the idea here is to partly add additional tools but also clarify the process. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure that staff and the public would understand is that there are actually a number of paths that the staff can use to address a violation of the municipal code, including violations of planning permits. So let's say that somebody is in the course of doing some construction project that's been permitted, but they're actually in violation of the permit. Without, I'm not going to go through the entire enforcement process, beginning with, like, initial context, but there are going to be a number of attempts, informal and in writing, to attempt to get the property owner to correct the deviations from what's been permitted. If that does not work, then one of the things that these additional tools will allow is an evaluation of what's going to be the most successful approach to getting compliance in this particular case. If the decision is that we think we can get compliance by imposing penalties, then we may choose to use the new administrative citation process where the enforcement officer has the choice to make each day that a violation is ongoing, a new violation, and impose an additional penalty for each day that it goes uncorrected. There may be additional cases where we think even high penalties are not going to work, and in that case, we would basically do what you're more used to, which is where we tee this up to come to the city council for a hearing. The city council, if they agree that the violation exists, would issue an order to comply, and if that still did not obtain the property owner's compliance, then we would look to go to court and get a court order that would result in a violation of contempt if they failed to comply with the court order. So there are ways to ratchet up, to actually make the penalties higher than the amounts that are stated, but there are also opportunities to use just the penalties where we think a smaller amount will be sufficient to get the property owner to come into compliance.
Done. Do any of it?
My questions have been answered.
Has been answered, okay. Anyone from the public? Sorry. Anyone from the public would like to make comments? I see none. I'll bring it back to the council. Council, do we have any questions?
No, I think it was very clear. Thank you for all the hard work on this.
Absolutely. Appreciate it, both of you. So may I have a motion, then?
Move to introduce and waive first reading of Ordinance 1040.
I'd second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? I see none. Thank you. All right, I will close a public hearing. We'll move on to our business items. 8.1, this is our third time having this, the small cell 5G wireless facility on our agenda. Consider a resolution adopting policies, procedures, and processing requirements for small cell wireless facilities. Is there a staff report?
A short one, I promise.
Good. Hi, Kristen.
Hi. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
All. Thank you, Mayor Morrison. Okay, well, as you noted, this has been discussed multiple times on April 3rd, the 17th, and then again on May 5th, where you focused primarily on this resolution addressing 5G policies. Based on the public and council comments that were provided in May 1st, you did provide me with direction for revisions to the resolution, and the ordinance, or the resolution before you tonight does reflect all of that direction. It has been reviewed also by Clarlie, our city attorney with Myers that works with Sky. Very briefly, the revisions include amendments to Section 2, Definitions in 3, applicability to address speculative facilities. There was concern about that. These are potentially developers who are not directly affiliated with a licensed wireless provider. We did amendments to Section 4, required permits and approvals to require a heritage tree removal permit when applicable. We amended Section 5, application requirements to address heritage trees and require a plan of deployment to better address potential speculative facilities. We amended Section 6, application submittal and review, to change the designative reviewer from the planning director to the zoning administrator, and to add a subsection empowering the zoning administrator to hire an independent qualified consultant to review documents and plans as needed, and all costs would be passed on to the applicant. We amended Section 7, approvals, denials, and notices, to clarify the public notice will be mailed by the city and not the applicant. And just so you know, it does go out 500 feet, where normally our code requires 300. And to detail the zoning administrator's review process, that's in there also. Amendments to Section 9, locational requirements, we added clarifying language to make sure it was clear that they are in order prior of preferred to least preferred. We also added clarifying language to make it clear the city does not encourage the least preferred locations. And last, we amended the resolution's format itself to add environmental clearance specifying the CEQA determination and Section 6 severability to ensure that if any portion is determined to be invalid, the remainder of the resolution would remain intact. So at this point, we recommend you adopt Resolution 1919 as presented, or if there are some minor modifications, you could provide direction for us to make last-minute changes.
So just reading your report, you guys have listened well to the public and to the council. Nice job.
Thanks.
Really appreciate it. Council members, any questions?
No.
No. I'm going to reach out to the public. Anybody from the public has a comment?
James Holmes, Larkspur, I too appreciate the amendments that have been made, especially the authorization to have an independent reviewer evaluate claims of technical sufficiency. I have just one remaining technical point, which grates on me, and that is the, Section 2C in the definitions, which is, I think it's on page 3 of the resolution, FCC shot clock. And that says FCC shot clock means the presumptively reasonable timeframe within which the city must act on a wireless application, as defined in FCC. I just question, why do we want to call it presumptively reasonable? I think it's presumptively unreasonable. We don't have to say that either, but it seems to me to be gratuitously obsequious and unnecessary, so I would delete the words presumptively reasonable from that definition. Thank you.
Page 3.
Page 3.
Thanks, James.
All right.
All right, anybody else in the public? I see none. Bring it back to the council. Any comments from anybody?
I think on that, I just would like our city attorney to respond to whether that, the language that Mr. Holmes highlighted on that definition is necessary, or can we just drop it?
Yeah, that's...
I, well, I'll just steal the planning director's comment that he just made to me, because it was along the lines of what I was thinking is, I actually think this is a way for us to signal that we think it's unreasonable. I mean, this is what, this is, it is technically correct. This is what the FCC has said, is the, there is a presumption that those time periods are reasonable. So we're just restating what they've said, but we're not accepting that they are actually the reasonable timeframes, and we have the ability, so there is risk from not complying with them, but we also have the ability to basically assert that a different time period would be reasonable. But the shot clock is generally understood to be what the FCC has defined as there being a presumption of a reasonable period of time.
Maybe it's just a matter of drafting, because it, the way it's drafted, it implies that it is reasonable. You know?
Should have had words to the effect, unless otherwise determined by the city.
That's what I'm wondering, whether there's a drafting fix to this.
Well, I could, Mike, an immediate suggestion would be to change it to that it means the timeframe that the FCC has stated is presumptively reasonable.
According to the FCC.
Right. The timeframe that the FCC has said is presumptively reasonable is the timeframe within which the city must act.
But it's all the same language, right?
It is.
It's saying the same thing.
But we could, you could reshift the emphasis, to be clear, that it's the FCC that's made that presumption.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say, we could say something means a reasonable timeframe within which we must act, or with the city to determine what may constitute reasonable under the circumstances, you know? I don't know. I'd be happy to defer to you to come up with a drafting fix to that issue.
So if you adopt it with direction to, for us to adjust the final wording to reflect that this is a presumption established by the FCC that the city retains the ability to make a different determination on a case-by-case basis, we can work on coming up with final wording.
That basically is my suggestion, so.
Okay. So who's going to make that motion?
I'd be happy to. So with that qualification, that the city attorney will look at some additional language to clarify the city's intent with respect to...
Resolution.
Well, with respect to Section 2, Definitions, Definition Number C, I'd like to move that the city council adopt Resolution Number 19/19, a resolution of the Larkspur City Council adopting policies, procedures, standards, and limitations for submittal and review of small cell wireless facilities as set forth in the Larkspur Municipal Code, Section
May I have a second?
Can we suffice, Scotty?
Does that work?
Yes, I think we can work with that.
Great. Thanks.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? I see none. Sky, we've kept you busy tonight.
I'm happy to be engaged.
We're so glad you're here. All right, we're going to move on to, thank you, Kristen, for the short report. Appreciate it. Yeah, well done.
Yes, thanks, Kristen. This is a challenging one, and you've done a great job. We appreciate it.
Yeah, you and your staff have done a great job. Good to see you. All right, 8.2, Fiscal Year 2019-20 Budget, General Fund Review Part 2, Preliminary 2019-20 Department Budgets. Kathy.
While the Administrative Services Director, Kathy Orr, makes her way up here to the council members, this is the second of, actually, it's a third of four meetings that we address the budget as part of our process of adoption. This is the last one, giving you the preliminary information, and then on June 5th, it's our intention to present, to deliver to you a proposed final budget for adoption. Tonight, what we'll be doing is reviewing the operational budgets of our community development, departments and divisions, planning and building and engineering. We'll be looking at Public Works, our maintenance operations. We do enumerate our public safety, operations, fire, and police, but of course, those are now both in joint powers authorities that adopt their own budgets, so it's just one big number in our budget now. And then we'll address general fund revenues, do a general overview, and the budget in brief. And then, when we're done with this presentation and answered your questions about the general fund, the Director of Public Works is here, and he'll do the second item, which will be your capital improvement program, and of course, those are very related issues. So bear with us, more slides than we've done at the previous two meetings, but we'll take you through and answer all your questions.
Can I ask a preliminary question?
There's a question here.
On the online agenda, it links to May 5th on that item, so this is in replacement of that, or was there something on the online agenda that is supposed to be on May 15th? So if you go to the general fund, 8.2A, click on it, you get, well, look at that. I was pushing the wrong button, so sorry about that. Retract everything I just said.
Okay.
Look how quickly you solve problems for me.
There you go.
Good evening, council members. Thank you again for hearing me out on our second workshop for the budgets. We are finishing up our departmental budgets, then taking a look at our revenues, general fund revenues, and then the overall picture of where we stand. This is going to be a little choppy, just the way the reports put up and all the details put in, because I've wanted to give you a detailed report of all the departments, even though you've already reviewed some of them to see the totals. So with that said, we're going to start with the departments, so if you will take your budget comparison... So if you will take your budget comparison report and go to page five, that's where we are starting tonight. And that would be department 0039, planning.
Yes.
All there? Okay. So we're starting with the planning department, and I will remind our assumptions for the budget this year was just based on contractual obligations and COLAs and health and our rural PERS. So with that said, we have, the planning budget is pretty much flat coming in for, Neil's done a great job, and this has been part of the reason that we've been doing so well, is that all the department has brought it in. I don't, there's nothing, not a really good story here to tell, except for that he's coming in flat as we had instructed all department heads. So if you turn the next page, we can go to the fire budget, and this is our new fire budget. So unfortunately, we have a lot of zeros in our parent budget from 1819 because we are now switching now to the new format. However, I will say that we are still budgeting for retiree health, which is approximately $30,000. So those are for all of our retired, current retired firefighters. And then if you go down to the contract services line item, you can see that is where we are now budgeting from the fire, that is our portion from our fire budget that was presented to the new fire council last Thursday. And then if we go to the next page, we are, then jump right into the police budget, which is also was adopted last Thursday. And again, we have a slight increase from their budget from last year, which is the city's portion. Again, with most of the, I can speak more to the CNPA budget than I can the fire budget. You know, there are also contractual obligations, PERS and that had contributed to those increases there.
This isn't, this is an example of what the city manager referred to as dumping the joint powers authority into one line item.
Yes. That's what it'll look like in the final, but the fire budget, if you couldn't see the, the previous years, the totals were not, wouldn't show up correctly.
For several years, the fire budget will continue to show the retiring medical costs for firefighters that worked for Larkspur and retired, because we are still responsible for those costs. They aren't transferring to the joint powers authority. So I misspoke slightly, there'll be that other line item going forward. And someday, that line item will disappear for obvious reasons.
Not complaining, it makes it easier to read, so that's fine.
We are getting into the building department, which is, has actually some changes. So we had proposed to take two of the positions, the permitting positions, from 37.5 hours to 40 hours a week. So that is the one change there. That's why you'll see an increase, a heftier increase in their budget. The part-time line item, and a reason that's going down is our inspector Doug Archer. So he's doing, he still is working and doing some inspections, but doing less. Dan, I don't know if you want to talk about more about those two positions? Okay. And that's pretty much all that's happening in the building budget, as the rest of the line items are being held flat. And then we get to next page, we're all following, that we get to the engineering budget where this is where all the excitement's happening. There is a new, new reorganization of this budget. So we have removed an admin assistant and replaced it with an admin analyst position. They're going to be approximately awash in the first year, and then we're taking the current analyst position one, the admin analyst position one to a two, to increase the more efficiencies in the department. And then we, I think we touched on it last work session, that the inspector, we're going to bring the inspections in-house and replace it with their contracts, as we're seeing the increase in the contract expenses would be a better, more money savings for, to bring it in-house. I think those are the main pieces that have changed in that department. Any questions on that? Dan, you want to add and talk to that?
Just remind the council and the public, there was an item on your consent calendar that goes into more detail about the reorganization and what the new positions assignments will be.
Okay, next page, we're rolling through budgets fast. This brings us to the rest of, the engineering budget would be streets. And again, I think they're pretty much flat. There's not a whole lot to talk about on the whole, the salary and budget piece of it. You'll have, you'll see on page, is it 13? 10, sorry. That's why I put my glasses on, the next page. There are two large increases in the line items of building and structures, and then streets and sidewalks, I believe that is. These were mid-year budget adjustments, so this is why they look like they are going down, but they're not. In this year, we hadn't came and said in mid-year that we needed increases for like one-time expenses. So that's why you'll see, it looks like it's going down, but it's because of the, the mid-year adjustment that we had there. Other than that, the department is holding flat.
Kathy, just one, one question back, back on, on engineering, on the workers' comp, that's a, it's not maybe a huge number, but it's a significant increase. Is that, is there a change that has occurred with respect to our workers' comp?
So no change in the workers' comp, but the way the workers' comp is split up between the departments is based on the number, your budget, your salary and benefit numbers. So they had changed, made some changes in their department with their personnel, which has increased them, their budget, their portion of workers' comp, if that makes sense.
So it's basically an accounting adjustment?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, back on streets. So streets is, besides there are two budget adjustments that we had for this current fiscal year, mid-year, their budget is flat. And I don't know if you have any other questions, but it just probably would have stood out to everybody. And which brings us to the last department, public works, which is parks. And parks is relatively steady so far. Both public works departments have now fully staffed, so this is awesome for Bob. And I have two items to talk about. The contract services line in parks, the reason that it is going down is that it's, we were contracting with Kroger to do, Kroger? Forcer and Kroger to do, help out with landscaping, when we did not have a fully staffed public works department. So that would be the only answer there. And then the very, very bottom, the other equipment line is a line item that we charge, have charges and that we collect a revenue in for our EV charging station. So that's why it looks just tightly, slightly different. Other than that, that is the recap of all of the departments and line items, and before we move on to looking at the general fund.
Nice job for me to be able to follow this budget. It's a difficult task for myself, and I followed it so easily, Kathy. So really appreciate you taking the time to make this so easy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Nice job. Anybody from the council have any questions?
In the, in the parks, the water seems to be, I mean, we went from 81,000 up to 124. Is that because of our?
We're budgeting for the increase from municipal water district.
Okay.
We have to anticipate it'll pass.
Right.
Anyone else? No. I'm going to open up to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions? I see none, I'll bring it back. Okay, so this is a presentation, so you'll continue on.
I will continue on. So after we've gone through our budgets, we're going to head to the general fund. So the general fund, you know, I'm going to, we're going to jump back into the detail of the revenue, but I first want to let you know how, what kind of assumptions we've made with the general fund revenues. So obviously, we have a healthy economy, and that definitely plays a role within our, the budget. I take a look at the revenues, and I conservatively had increased the ones that are trending, correct, trending up. So we'll see some increases there. I have, I have a projection of $17.8 million for our revenues, and the trends that I see going up were property values, property taxes are still very strong, our sales tax is still very steady and seems to be coming in as projected. And then the franchise fees, most of them are very strong as well. So with that said, if we could jump back to our detailed budget report, to the revenue side, I'll walk you through our detailed revenues. And that would start on page one. You know, it's a little choppy, sorry. I don't, I didn't put it up on the screen because it's just too many line items, right? You can't see it. So if we are all on that, back on the budget comparison report, you will see that the property tax, I have projected 5% increase. These estimates do come from the county assessor's office, and they have been very, their projections have been right on, so I am trusting those and as we go forward. In fact, and as, as always, all of the budget items can be reviewed at mid-year to see where we are, if we need to make any adjustments, keep that in mind. The ERAF has been trending up, so I've increased it by $100,000. It also is part of the state in the funding, how it comes, flows through the property taxes. Oh, God. Augmentation. Education augmentation fund?
Yeah, I think the R is revenue. It's a ref, back in the day before a number of propositions sort of eliminated the ability of the state to do this, they used to use their authority over revenues coming into the schools to cut deals, move property taxes and sales taxes around, and they would, these deals would get captured in what was called ERAF. And various notorious flipping of money was often talked about.
Mm-hmm. Which is thankfully over.
We were a rare winner in, in most of the state shenanigans, because we're a property tax city. Cities that were more reliant on sales tax hurt more than we did as a result of that, so.
Okay. Moving on to our next line item that has been increasing is our sales tax. Like I said, it has been trending, as you can see from the history, it's been very strong, so we're trending, it go to 1.7, or 1.7, 2.7 this next year, going up $100,000. And most of the franchise fees have also been very strong. I am making an adjustment for the cable last year, or this year. I have budgeted 295, and we have like one more payment to come in, and it looks like we're going to be short, so I actually have downgraded them to make, to make the adjustment this, in 2020, in 1920. I get, I'm getting too many years. So I should just stick to the numbers, the years. Last, our TOT, that would be the Marriott that we collect for the TOT fund. We have three more months to collect, we will definitely hit our budget number, and it has been very, very strong. As the economy's been strong and people come and still visit through our San Francisco and they stay there, it's very popular, so I have no problem with that one. I am always amazed by the building and planning department, because they are still being very strong in their revenues and in their activity. So it's, they're trending up, so I've also increased.
Larry has a question.
Actually, not a question, but a comment. You know, one of the things you can do is to check the minutes of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, since we're no longer a member of that, what you can do is look at their revenue projections, and I'm sure we would model fairly close, because we have effectively the same market that we're dealing with in terms of things like Comcast, AT&amp;T, stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Wow, Kathy's making that note. I just wanted, for the benefit of the public and the reminder to the council, we, we trend toward, or we lean toward the conservative side whenever we're doing our revenue projections, but we rely heavily on the modeling that the county Marin and the state of California are doing. They've shifted back a projected slowing of the economy another year, and that's what, one of the reasons we've been probably more optimistic than we've been in years about the revenues next year. And, but they are cautioning that they think the 2021 year will see a slowdown in revenue.
Yes. I think we, I think I mentioned it at our last budget meeting, that we are, we have pushed out what we see as a slowing or a trend, you know, downward trend one more year based on the state. So we, as I said, we can always revisit all of these mid-year and see where we are.
So what year are they predicting the downturn?
I think they're starting, the county Marin in its most recent report, the staff to the board, I think after the presidential election is what they're suspecting would be, when the economy will start to slow. And that's actually a historical trend. The economy tends to hold pretty stably in a presidential election year. And then depending on it, the market's reaction and the economy's reaction to what happens, we often see a slowdown.
Thank you.
Penalties and fines, again, we're just seeing small little trends there. There's not, not a lot of money there, but we are seeing some trending upward that have increased. And investment earnings and rentals, where the rentals were really only like the dollar that we get from the rowing fund twice a year, but it's there. Investment earnings has continued to be steady as well, which is nice. Going to the next page and to other agencies. Normally, we would see, you know, we have, I put in a FEMA line, I am, we may or may not be getting FEMA money for our slides. I think we, our, our appeal has gone through, so I, I'm not sure that it'll be coming into the general fund, though. I believe that it'll be going into the capital project fund. I'm not sure if there is a general fund money to be replaced there. I'll have to go through that thoroughly. But we don't really budget for what-ifs. And charges and services, one area I want to talk about is the recreation fees about midway down. Nick came to you and had a mid-year budget year, he was increasing his contracts and saying he needed for his expenses, because he's having a lot more, there's more people, there's more action going on, so he needed to have more in his budget. Well, this should also relate to the revenues that are being collected. So we've increased, I've increased their recreation fees to match that, that we should be seeing as an increase. And then his rental, his recreation rentals is like the parks, and Nick has did a great job of reorganizing the parks and having a better idea about how they should be clustered and how they can be rented out. So we've seen an increase. We're already seeing monies rolling in for the summer, for people getting their spots for their special occasions, so this is great. It's already an increase for his hard work on that. Down to other revenues, one item I want to talk about is the decrease in other revenues. Down to other revenues, one item I want to talk about is the decrease in other revenues, which is the EH ground lease, and the money came into the housing fund, so we're seeing that the $20,000 come in through transfers in. It's just an accounting way to do it, so it's not, the revenue source is decreasing, but it is coming back in through transfers in.
And maybe just for the benefit of folks who don't know what all that jargon means, the city owns land that it leased the ground to a developer for low-income housing and affordable housing. So, that development here in Larkspur pays rent on using the ground, and then they own the structure on top of the ground. The one on Magnolia is the one that's generating the, the rent.
Which brings us to the transfer page, if you go to the next page for the transfers. We have a few transfers in and I, that I've talked about, the general fund transfer in line item includes a transfer in for Measure C for the fire truck. We're paying for the, paying off the fire truck, not off, but we're paying the lease on it. We also include a TOT transfer in for the, the support that we give for the Larkspur Theater, also for the chamber. And then, there's, there's money in there from the housing fund like I just talked about. And we have also a small transfer if needed from reserves, if we need to have that covered. And that is our revenues in detail. Any questions? Okay. We get to the overall expenditure items, and I'm seeing that we've hit the expenditures in great detail, I'll just, we'll review and recap some of what we, how it was built. We were expecting the expenditures to come in at $17.9 million, includes contractual obligations of PERS and our MOUs. We have our salary increases of 3.5%. We also, though, with that, have asked our employees to pay an additional now, 1%, another 1%, 2% in total, 1% for this year, another 1% for next year, employer portion of the PERS. So, I, that helps, Dan, if you want to say anything more about how the, you know, the PERS, the employer portion of the normal cost.
No, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands our employees are not only paying their employee share, they're now making a contribution toward the city's cost for the pensions, so. For example, a classic employee, so an employee who's pre the PEPRA reforms for pensions is now paying in total 10% of their salary toward their pension costs.
The rest of this is for, just mainly pictures that we can go through. What, here we go. This is an overall view of our general fund revenue, showing from year to year, we can see our 18 actual where we came in, our 19 amended budget, that's with our mid-year budget adjustments, and what we're, I see what says adopted up there and it should say proposed, my apologies.
And just so folks know, this is attachment two of the printout, if you want to look at it there instead of the screen.
So, showing increases in the revenue streams there for our total revenues of $937,000 increases from the previous budget year. Questions? Onto what the overall expenditures look like in the light items, this would be all of our departments, our operational on the top half of total expenditures, and then we have our transfers in and out, which brings us to a balanced budget this year. So, we're happy to please to say that we are bringing in as a balanced budget. I don't know if you have any questions on the, all.
There are two significant expense decisions in this budget to draw your attention to. The first is the decision not to budget for that additional contribution toward retiring medical, toward OPEB liability, that should go into a trust based on the actuarial analysis. It doesn't mean we don't plan on doing it, it's that we don't think, we, I don't feel I can bring you a balanced budget and include that amount. I want to work with the council to figure out a way to fund that amount going forward and address it in the mid-year budget, once we have a long-term plan. The second thing is, we were squirreling away $50,000 a year in the hopes that over a few years we'd build up a nice fund and we could replace the elevator here in City Hall. So, we kept showing that in the budget, so you'll see there's a building maintenance, a rather significant change in building maintenance. That's because we now realize that approach isn't going to work, it needs to be a capital project and a much bigger conversation about this whole building.
Right.
So, we released that strain on the budget of building up that fund, and that's why you're seeing that big shift there in that amount of money.
Where's that mon, how's that money been allocated then?
So, that just is helping us balance the entirety of, of the budget now.
Part of the general fund, then?
Yeah.
Have we ever also tracked donations? Like, for instance, the library's budget is X amount, but they receive X amount in donations from the foundation and the Friends of the Library, do you ever keep track of that in our budget totals?
So, prior to last year, those were all occurring as a sort of secondary matter where the library's actually turning invoices over to our partners and the partners were directly paying the invoices. I had some reservations about that because of liability issues around some of the invoices being paid. So, you may recall, we started a new arrangement with the Friends of the Library, where all programming is now built into the general fund budget, and then we are invoicing the Friends, so you would, you'll see that as revenue as an offset. The occasional one-time donations that the library foundation's making are still sort of not, we don't treat them as a budgetary matter. If that money comes in, it's a what-if. If they make some decision to donate to us in a given year, we then book that as a donation that came in.
Okay.
At the time, but we don't budget for it.
Great, great, okay. I don't think there's any more questions.
Any more questions?
No more questions, just pictures. Pie charts, I like pie charts, I like pictures, it shows where our property taxes are and why it's so important for us, and sales tax following it. I'll move right on to the next one, where we have public safety is, that's normal, part of the budget, but there's all of our departments. We have a lot of little departments and they all are, they all make great contributions to running the city. And that is, brings us to our challenges. Obviously, we're continually, it's going to be continual to manage the pension costs, meeting the OPEB obligation, and I think we, Dan just touched on that, we touched on it last budget meeting, employing the increasing employment costs, our LMEAs, MOU is expiring. And then, you'll hear a whole lot more from Julian about our maintenance and infrastructure needs right after this, but main, the three main ones is the City Hall seismic retrofit, the fire stations, and then storm drains. So, with that, is all I have.
Okay, before you leave.
Oh, wait, do you want, one more slide?
Well, and let's take questions now and then I had a couple of things just to show the council, if you have questions on what you heard from Kathy.
Okay, council members, any questions for Kathy? I see none, all right? I'm going to go out to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions? All right.
I have a question.
You need to come up and state your name and your address.
Yes. My name is Dr. Savapu and I pay, I, my address is 54 Walnut Avenue. I've been paying taxes over $15,000 a year, and I look at this budget and I don't see any preventative, what is here, you know, $17.9 million, we pay taxes and you get all of that. So, we have a letter for library, letter for, not really, I don't see, I'm sure you can see in your record, we got a lot of, for recreation, it's not really that much. Plus, I have a comment. They have, but they're going to hire two, three people, I highly recommend you, it will be diverse. Please, because that's, I think, that is the biggest problem in this town, is the race.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? I see none. Bring it back to the council. So, Kathy, thank you for the presentation. Well done. Oh, Dan, you're going to say something, though.
I said, my own pictures, although they're Kathy generated them for me, and they came out a little smaller than I'd hoped.
We like Kathy's pies better.
Ouch.
Just kidding.
We talked so much about the PERS rates, I just wanted to make sure we reminded the council sort of what, in public, why the last few years it's been such a mantra. So, first at the top, you are being shown what our PERS rates were for the years leading up to the decision by CalPERS to both lower the discount rate and also to implement the PEPRA reform, and lastly, they switched the methodology for rates so that they would now charge what they call an ALU lump sum, an actuarial calculated lump sum. And they would have the rates be primarily focused on the costs for the employees going forward. So, the lump sum sort of is supposed to take care of all the liability that we built up in the past, and then the rates are supposed to take care of liability going forward. So, the methodology changed, and the problem with that is now if I, I can't really say to you, well, the rate to pay for my pension this year is whatever percent it is, Kathy might know, I don't remember. And five years ago it was a different rate, because it's apples to oranges now, because they've, they've changed their methodology. But this chart gives you a better sense of why in 2017 we really kind of went, whoa, what's going on? And that's because that's when we started getting hit with both the rates being at these new numbers that you see in the top chart, and this cumulative methodology, so Kathy stacked them on top of each other so you can get a sense of sort of how they work cumulatively to hit us. And then lastly, we now are charged this rather large annual payment, which is the number that's growing in the bottom bar.
So, Dan, can you just give us an example for the next three years? Give us numbers? I can't see them.
Those aren't, numbers aren't there? Kathy, what's the lump sum payment for next year?
Well, I have, I can give you an example of the CalPERS numbers.
Well, I think the mayor's asking what the lump sum number is next year, so.
Please.
Next year, the lump sum is 1 point.
I'm looking 5.
That's the red bar?
In the bottom.
Well, they're both the same, they're one safety and one miscellaneous.
I'm sorry, these are just a little too small to.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, it's just good. Thanks, Dan.
Well, just as a matter of, an example, if we were.
$1.57.
A mil, 1 million, 1 million dollars is the lump sum payment, and.
I wanted to say it out loud. I want the public to hear it.
So, and then, in 2016, it was roughly half that.
Yeah.
So, if you fall, if, on the historical, back to the budget report page on the non-departmental side, in 2017, our unfunded liability when it started was $500,000, then it went to $657,000, then went to $834,000, and now it's gone to over a million, it's a million. So, you can see that it's continually to go up.
Yes, yes, thanks Kathy. Larry?
Yeah, I mean, if anybody wants to look this stuff up, on the CalPERS website or the actuarial valuations, and for each of our plans, there's a summary of what our annual required contribution and our normal cost is. So, for example, if you look at the miscellaneous plan for the people who are in the classic tier, which is, you know, largest percentage of our employees right now, you know, like, the required contribution is estimated to be $492,500 for that plan.
For just that cost.
Yeah, but if you look at the normal cost, they're projecting like a 12.2% normal cost for the next five years. Then, you know, like in 2020, it goes to $550,000, and then $620,000, 2021, and then $678,000, and then at 712, and then five years out, it's $747,000.
So, for a budgetary exercise, the challenge for the, for us over the next several years is that, CalPERS has sort of misleadingly issued every agency something that looks very much like the schedule for your mortgage, right? With the 30-year payment schedule and you're going to pay this amount this year and this amount the following year and so on, until you've paid this unfunded liability off. And it would be great if that unfunded liability was truly a fixed amount, like your mortgages, but it's not. The unfunded liability is a moving number, so you have the problem that the variables that affect that number are changing annually, and so they can't guarantee us that that's truly what we'll pay over, say, the next decade. So, we actually have to not only plan that we're going to pay that, we have to assume the number's going to grow. And so, it's very misleading to issue those schedules in one respect. I don't know what else they could do, so I don't fault them, they're trying to help us out doing some projecting, but we just have to always bear in mind that depending on the, whether we have classic employees or new employees post-reform affects that number, whether or not the investments of CalPERS perform well affects that number, whether or not they decide to change the discount rate, so their, the discount rate's essentially their assumption of the returns they're going to make. They all affect that number, and so, we don't have the luxury of saying we know exactly what we're going to pay over the next several years, we can only use that as a rough estimate.
Great. Any more questions? All right, thank you Kathy and Dan, appreciate it. It's a, it's a doable budget, we're very fortunate this year and next, yes.
So, we'll be bringing the budget for adoption on June 5th.
Okay, thank you. 8.2B, conduct workshop to review proposed capital improvement programs for fiscal year 2019-20. Council's going to receive a presentation. Hi, Julian.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the public. My name is Julian Skinner, I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. And tonight I have the other half of our annual budget, which is the capital improvement program, and so we have for you tonight a draft program for your comments and feedback, and then we will be back at the subsequent council meeting with asking for your consideration of adoption of the budget. So, briefly the agenda, I'll just go over a little bit how we come up with the capital improvement program, and then I'll talk a little bit about the projects that make up the program, and then talk a little bit about the funding with a highlight on Measure B, which is one of our major funding sources this year. So, again, as I had started all these presentations, just a reminder of what the capital program is, it's our projects to improve or maintain or rehabilitate our infrastructure, and this, these are the highlights, there are other ancillary items that we take care of, but for the most part, we're talking about our streets, and that includes everything that goes along with the streets, the street lights, traffic signals from retaining walls, and then also all the storm drains that are underneath those streets. And then, two other categories are parks, which is Piper Park and the mini-parks, and then the buildings that we maintain, including the one we're in tonight. So, how do we build the CIP? So, it starts with a list of needs, and this comes from documents such as studies that we've had done, condition studies. As you know, we're currently in the midst of a storm drain master plan, so that's a document that would ultimately feed into some capital projects, would identify some needs in the storm drain system. Our streets get rated every year, so we know which streets need to get improved, our bridges get inspected. In addition to that, other than just condition studies, we also have planning documents such as the bike and ped master plan that has a list of anticipated projects for bike and ped access. And then we also have both the Piper Parks master plan and a mini-parks action plan too. And then, of course, we have all of the previous year's capital improvement program. And then, of course, we have all of the previous year's capital improvement programs where we've contemplated projects. In addition to that, sometimes there are grant calls for projects that are specific to certain types of improvements, and that's when we would consider such as safe routes to schools, things like that. And then, of course, things that are unforeseen, like when we have a slide, we have to fix a slide, and that also turns into a capital project. And then, so that's the need, that's the project side of things. The other half of the capital program is the funding, where the money comes from to pay to address those needs. The best one are grants, because that money comes from elsewhere. We have a couple at the moment. The Highway Bridge Program is our biggest one. That's paying most of the bills on the Bonner Bridge, and then Transportation Development Act, which is paying for some crosswalk improvements that you're going to see in the coming weeks downtown. And then other sources, local money, gas tax, which includes the SB one portion. Measure B is our local sales tax, which is going into our paving program. And then also the Transportation Authority of Marin has transportation sales tax and a vehicle registration fee. County Parks, Measure A, goes towards our park improvements. Then we also have vehicle impact fees, which comes both from the refuse and also a construction fee for new projects. And then PG&E Rule 20A, which is not really a fund, it's a reimbursement. That is money that PG&E sets aside for undergrounding projects. We get a lot of questions and calls about undergrounding for folks in neighborhoods, but the PG&E Rule 20A money is for major streets only. So the next round of PG&E Rule 20A money you'll see is on our Doerty Drive, doing the remainder of the undergrounding on Doerty. And then restricted revenue, which is a combination of other sources such as donations that come in that are for a restricted purpose, that then get allocated to specific projects. So what do the projects look like? So the projects are typically for your larger scale improvements or not for everyday or routine maintenance. And they could span multiple years, like the Bonner Bridge is a four-year project. Actually, it's a 10-year project when you take into account all the environmental analysis and the design. They often include planned funding in future years, but when we adopt the capital improvement program, you're only allocating money for the current fiscal year. And so while it's a five-year plan, and it looks at over a five-year horizon, you're only actually committing money to the current fiscal year. So how do we come up with the CIP? So basically, we take that first slide, all the needs that we have, and then we look at the available funding, and we make a match based on a few things, prioritizing what are the urgent needs. And then also, some of the funding is available only in specific needs, and that ties to when we would do a project. And also, we want to balance our project timing with our resources. There's certain projects we don't want to do at the same time because they're too close and they would interfere. And then there's also, we can't pave all the streets in one year because it's not really practical for the neighborhood or at the staffing level. So that's how we kind of spread things out over the five years. And then again, we do revisit and re-adopt the five-year CIP every year. So it's every year of the CIP is reevaluated every year. We don't have to wait for this period to make revisions. If a project comes up mid-year or a funding source comes up mid-year, we can always come back to council with a resolution to amend the CIP. And the other part of it is not every project makes it into the CIP. There are way more needs. As Administrative Services Director alluded to before, we have some big needs that we know about out there. We don't have a funding source at the moment, and we haven't really had a community discussion about what those priorities are. So those are maintained as a list of unfunded projects at the moment, and you don't see them in the CIP. So I'll get right into this year's CIP. So again, it's a five-year, so starting with the buildings. The highlighted column here is the current fiscal year. So what, with the adoption of the budget, you would be allocating this year. The next column show the projected next year's out. And so we only have one building project that's currently in the CIP. It's upgrades out at the Greenberry Fire Station, Fire Station 16. There's no money added to it this year. We added money last year to do some investigation to determine the source of some leaks, and then we're projecting in the future years, we would have some money to do some corrective work out there. So again, the 1920 column here is blank. There's no funding request for that project, but it is active because we seeded it with money last year. Moving to the parks projects, where we do have some funding allocations this year, again, the yellow column. So the first column is money that's been previously allocated to a project. Then the next column, the yellow column, is money that would be allocated this year, and then the subsequent columns are projected years out in the five-year CIP. And then the last column is the project total. And so for this year, we're looking at adding $10,000 to Niven Park, sorry, to the park sign improvements. The rows don't quite line up here, but that first row is the Park Sign Improvement Program, which you already allocated money to. We're proposing another $10,000 this year. I think at your next council meeting, you're gonna see a presentation that the Parks and Rec Commission saw previously on the proposal for the park signs, a uniform sign for the parks. And so we're allocating money with the anticipation that when that park sign gets adopted, we'll be rolling out our first sign. And then in the future years, we've got some more signs going in either, they'll go in as a separate project, or as we get through some of these parks and make other improvements, we will include a sign. So the next item down is Niven Park. So that's where the bulk of parks money is going this year, and that is to do improvements to the playground structure and some ADA improvements at Niven Park. And if the park sign is adopted, then a park sign, a new park sign for Niven would be included in that project. The next one down is just a small amount of money that's being added to the Piper Park Volleyball Court Number Two. This was restricted revenue. This was a Larkspur Community Foundation donation. This project previously received $40,000 in funding. And then the next projects down are all future year allocations. And so I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the future projects, but really only gonna discuss the projects that we're adding money to or that are currently active this year unless you have questions. I'm gonna skip ahead to the biggest category, which is our streets or transportation drainage and utilities. The big one, the first row here is our Measure B Group Two. So that is our second Measure B project. We're allocating, we're asking for $7.1 million this year. And that's for another seven and a half or so miles of streets. And then as you go down to the next row, that's, doesn't have a funding allocation for this year, but you can see Measure B Group One had 4.7 allocated last year. And so all the funds that were allocated to projects in previous years that haven't been spent yet are rolling over. So what you're seeing in the yellow column here is new funding that's being asked for for the first time this year. So we'll go down.
Do you saw that it's been rolled over now?
I don't. There's another slide further on, actually, that I have, but it's very small. It gets, gets very, I can show it to you, but it has, there's a lot of projects and a lot of columns. So yeah, the, the money that hasn't been spent this year gets rolled over into the next. And then the next funding request for this year is for Doerty Bridge mitigation. This is an ongoing project. After we did the Doerty Bridge, we're required to do some mitigation, some planting, and we have to monitor it for five years to make sure it survives. So we fund that. And I believe this is the last year of that monitoring. And then the next one is one I alluded to before with the PG&E. This is Doerty Drive Undergrounding. So we're proposing $825,000, goes towards that project to underground the overhead utility lines on Doerty. So these are the remaining sections of Doerty. One is down by Redwood High School near Lucky. I think there's about four or five poles at that end. And then from CNPA up to Magnolia, there's another series of poles and overhead wires.
Is that money from them, or is that from our budget? Or is that from measure?
That money is from the PG&E Rule 20A.
Rule 20A, okay.
So yeah, there's a slide further down that shows the breakdown of the funding sources. Most of it's from PG&E. The city needs to contribute towards streetlights and towards staff time for review of the project. But the bulk, all the construction costs, other than the streetlights, comes from PG&E's Rule 20A.
Julian, maybe I misunderstood on the PG&E fund. I thought that was a reimbursement as opposed to like a grant. Do we, can we count on that money upfront?
That money, yeah, we get, we, there's, there's a bunch of different ways that PG&E run that program. And the way we're running it is PG&E are actually going to advertise that project and pay the contractor directly. So I've got it in here as a CIP, but there's a, there's a different mechanisms for doing that. We could actually take the lead and do it and be reimbursed, but PG&E does have an option, and it's the fast-track way to get the project completed, as everything is done in-house by PG&E. So.
Can I, can we just step back to the Hamilton Park improvements? Let me ask just about that. For some reason, I recall that we had an ADA need there for accessibility down to the dock for a ramp or something like that, or?
That's a different park. That's the Bonner.
Bonner Landing Park.
Landing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's two parks on South Elysio.
Okay.
Hamilton's, you almost don't realize it's a park. It's mostly pavement. It's right next to the large facility that was, has had various uses over the.
You're right, because I got those two confused. The other one's called Bonner Landing Park.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And Bonner Landing Park is included in the Bonner Bridge mitigations projects, which I don't think I've quite got to yet.
Not yet.
Maybe it's on the next slide. There's just some slides before we get to the next table. Those are shots of the bridge construction today in the rain. So the picture on the left there is the first or the westerly most bent. So this is actually construction that's coming up finally out of the water, something we can see. This is basically the big concrete member on which the bridge girders will sit. And so this is the framing and then the purple rebar for that girder, for that bent. And then there are four of these being installed right now in the creek. So here's the next part of the streets projects. Hillview Garden Storm Drain. We're moving forward with a consultant for the next step, which will be to do the design. We've plugged in a million dollars here for the improvements. The bulk of that is coming from County Flood Control. That's an MOU that still has to go through a process with the Board of Supervisors and back through the council, but we're hopeful we'll get that project in the next fiscal year. So we've plugged the money into this capital budget. And then every year, we put money in a miscellaneous bike and ped improvement project. That's for doing minor things that come up, requests for ADA ramps at certain locations or striping on a bike path, or something that's a bit above and beyond our routine maintenance operations, but not big enough to get a grant for. And then the bottom one here, the number that's kind of hidden because it's way down, is the $9.8 million for the Bonner Bridge replacement. And so again, the bulk of that is from the Highway Bridge Program. And this is being allocated, as you can see, we've already allocated 18 million to that project over the last two fiscal years, and we'll be asking for another 9.7 next year. And so if you look at the right column, that's a 37-point-something-million-dollar project. All the other projects that are listed there are active. There was in the staff report, a list of all these projects that said what status they were in, as far as if they were active or on hold or waiting for coordination, if you have any questions on any of those projects that aren't scheduled to receive money this year. There's some photos from the recent paving. This is up in the Greenberry Hills. This is Elysio Drive, just freshly repaved. And then here's the last part of the streets projects. So these are the projects that are in the out years. That's why the yellow column is blank here. There's no funding request, but because we're doing a five-year plan, we're projecting these projects so we can plan out in the next few years. So as we adopt the budget at the next meeting, there will be four projects that should be completed before the end of this fiscal year that will not be carried over. And so there will be a separate agenda item at your next meeting also to close these projects out and do any of the final accounting that's required, either taking the leftover funds out of the projects and putting them back in the fund, or adding money if that's And this is just another view of what I showed you before, but it has a breakdown of the funds. So if anybody's interested in where the money's coming from, when I showed the first, one of the first slides that had our funding sources, this actually breaks it down further. The slides we just saw showed how much per year. This shows from what funds they're coming from, but only for the current fiscal year. So for example, I'll just go through one here. That top line is the Measure B Group Two pavement rehabilitation. The number I showed you before was a $7.1 million project. Well, that's not all Measure B. 6.4 million is coming from Measure B. That's paying for the contractor, that's paying for the asphalt out on the street. There's other money in that project, too. 360,000 in gas tax and 340,000 in vehicle impact fees that are paying for the consultants and the staff time to implement that project. And so each one of these projects has a breakdown of funds where we're showing where the money's coming from. And then just an update on Measure B. This is, again, up on our website, we are currently doing the green streets here. Next summer, we will be doing the red and the blue. We already have our consultant onboard. He's been out there doing the testing and the coring and the deflection analysis. So while we are paving streets this year, they're already working on the design for the streets next year. And here is the, the table view of that, the gray, these are the Measure B projects that we listed when you adopted the Measure B plan back in May of last year. The gray projects are already underway and were allocated in last year's budget. The yellow projects here that are highlighted are part of that Group Two project that I just showed you, the 7.1 million. And then the ones that have no color are in the future years. So as we allocate this next coming year's project and get through the construction, we'll be almost halfway through our Measure B program. So the funding summary, the, all of the projects in the current five-year CIP is about $83 million, so it's a pretty robust capital program. We're rolling over about $33 million. And this year, with the funding, all of those yellow columns that I showed highlighted, the sum of all that funding is $18.8 million. And here's the breakdown of that 18.8 into those categories with park development, bridge fund, gas tax, the 6.4 in Measure B, vehicle impact fees, some restricted revenue. Most of that is the PG&E Rule 20A. Sorry, most of that is the County Flood Control for Hillview. The PG&E Rule 20A is the next line, and then the grant funding, most of which is the Highway Bridge Program. So that's the end of the presentation. I'm available for questions and feedback, and I do somewhere have, that's the sheet that I was referring to that has the, the rollovers that show, so.
Is that in here?
Not sure if that was an attachment.
I don't really see the rollover.
There was a sheet that was colored in the, it's called a planning grid.
We didn't get that one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, the first one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that has the, yeah, the balance and the rollover. Yeah.
Hey, Julian. Where do we begin? You've covered so much. And as you continued on, you answered all my questions. Counsel, any questions for Julian?
No, I really appreciate the clarity with what you presented.
Absolutely. Well done.
My only question is, I know we, the Measure A funds, isn't that, is that renewal up on the ballot this year?
The Park District is considering putting it on the ballot. It's not actually expiring for another year or two.
Okay, so we can still anticipate those funds at this point? Yeah.
Yes.
Sure. Dan?
The PG&E money identified, the Rule 20 funding, will that be impacted in any way by the current?
Bankruptcy?
Stuff going on with PG&E? Is that the same financial entity, or is it a different? How's that organized? And will it have an impact on that money? Can we count on it?
I don't know that I've asked that question.
In theory, it should be there. And that's right, in past bankruptcies, the PG&E haven't affected it. But I don't know, we're comfortable definitively answering that question.
But everything else is pretty solid with the, with the funding.
Yeah, I get together with the Finance Director every year and look at the monies that have come in, and all of those funds that I showed you, the gas tax and the vehicle impact fee. And we never exhaust the money that's coming in. We always leave a little bit of cushion. So, yeah, there's, yeah.
Smart. Great. Thank you. No more questions from the council, I'll go ahead and open to the public. Any from the public, have any questions?
Cindy Winter, I have a question that I'm really curious about. I live on South Elysio, and for the past four or six weeks, there have been mammoth trucks digging up the street and trenching and putting pipes down, and I thought it was Ross Valley Sanitary, and it may be partly that, but then I saw another. Sanitary, and it may be partly that, but then I saw another small orange pipe going down, and I just think our neighbors would like to know what's happening, and I can't explain it to them.
So there are a couple of encroachment permits currently out on South Elisee, so I'm not sure exactly which one it is. Orange is typically gas, but there is also a telecom company that's piggybacking on some AT&amp;T lines out on South Elisee. So if you have a little bit more information, I can find out from our inspector.
Great. Thanks, Cindy. Thank you. Julian, thanks for that. Bring it back. Oh, okay, James?
James Holmes, Larkspur. Just referencing the PG&E, I don't know that we can count on it if what has happened on South, the streets on South Magnolia in the vicinity of Piedmont and thereabouts, because they had paved, they dug up the sidewalk last year and they still haven't paved it. It's still just very rough asphalt, much to the displeasure of the poor people down there on, on South Magnolia. But anyway, and there's of course no explanation for why that's happened, but my, my question specifically relates to the Magnolia-Madron intersection project, and specifically a slide 10 on page 5, and it's right at the bottom, and it's 17301 Magnolia-Madron, and I gather that is going to be, is that, well, I'll get to the point. There's a bus, I just, on my way over here, it said, there is a sign at the bus stop, and it says that it's going to be cut off, discontinued from approximately May 15th today to 6:30. My question is, is that as a result of this? And if it is, that's, that's a disaster for me. So I guess my first question is, is that with respect to that project? And if so, can something be done? I mean, couldn't the bus just stop in front of one of those broad driveways or something rather than, than discontinue it completely? Because, I mean, candidly, that's the difference between, for me at least, and maybe other people, but I can't walk to another bus stop. So if that's being cut off, that's a disaster.
So based on the dates that Mr. Holmes provided, I suspect it is. That's not a directive that the city gives. The city requires that the contractor coordinate with transit agencies, trash companies, to see what the impacts might be of their work. I know that the contractor did meet with Marin Transit and Golden Gate. It was my understanding that the work was not going to impact, or I know the work is not going to impact the entirety of the bus pad, but ultimately, it's up to the transit authority to determine whether they feel comfortable operating the buses in the proximity to the construction that's going to take place. So I would suggest if they put up signs saying that it's closed, they have determined that they're not comfortable operating that bus stop while the work takes place.
Well, I'd ask the city to do something to try to, to, try, I mean, the comment, it was my understanding also that that was not going to affect the bus pad at the time. I mean, as I say, it's a disaster for, if you can't walk from, you know, down to the next one, that means essentially one's access to the bus has been cut off. And I can't help but think that, you know, gosh, they could just pull up in front of one of those big double driveways, just briefly. But can't we do anything to modify?
Can we check into that, Julian?
I can talk to Marin Transit. Again, I can't direct.
Of course you can.
How they run their operations.
Right.
But it's my understanding, they did meet with the contractor and they looked at the nature of the work, and that's the decision they came up with. I know that when we've worked with them in the past, they look at ridership and they look at distance to the next bus stops when they make these decisions of whether to close them or not, and they also look at the timeframe that it'll be closed. But I, I will talk to the same two contacts.
I mean, a month and a half and no, a month and a half and, and no, you know, none nearby, that's just radical.
All right, well, we're going to check into that. And James, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. All right, any other questions for our public work director? No? Okay. Julian, what a nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on. Thanks again, Julian.
Thank you.
Boy, you're making Larkspur pretty as safe and, and beautiful. All right, we'll move on to 8.3 in the business items, proposed, proposed rate increase by the Marin Municipal Water District and directing the city manager to file a vote of protest in accordance with the Proposition 218. So do we want to have a staff report, Dan?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members, this is, from time to time, our utility providers elect to increase revenue by putting some sort of fee or assessment on the property tax bill. Process that governs the rules around this is Proposition 218. Effectively, what happens is, I think you're all nodding your heads, this is happening to you and your residences, is that if you are a customer and you own property, you have the right to protest the fee if you so desire. The city is a property owner, and we are being affected by this. So the council has the option to protest on behalf of the city, or direct me to do We don't have the real ability or bandwidth to do a detailed assessment of the valid, the validity of this fee, not in this time period, and probably not with our staff resources. So we're turning it over to you with sort of the same knowledge all our residents have of, we have what the district's given us in terms of this fee, but we're seeking your guidance and direction, and if you direct me to file a protest on behalf of all of the city's properties, then I will do so per the instructions of the district for the process for filing.
Generic letter, correct, Dan?
They have a preferred generic process, and we'll, we'll just follow that for the filing, yeah.
Okay.
Even for municipality?
In this case, we're a property owner, just like you all are, so we'd be filing for each of our properties in the same way that you, you're considering filing as a homeowner.
Gavin, I see your question.
Yeah, no, I just, I just.
Or comment.
It follows up on, on your question about what the, what the format of a protest would be, and my understanding from at least the materials that I've received from the Water District is that there's not a lot more that's really required, other than identification of the property, your connection with the property, and a statement that you're protesting. And if you want to embellish it there about the reasons why you're protesting, at whatever length you choose, you can do that, but in order to register a protest, my impression is there's not a heck of a lot more.
I think that's.
That's required.
I think that's correct. I think we could just turn in this paper saying here are the, the.
The reasons.
Parcels that we own that are subject to this fee, and we're casting votes for all of them.
Yeah, there's, there's been some ambiguity, and at least I thought there was some ambiguity in the, in the mailings that they put out about how much information you need to provide in your protest letter in terms of identifying the parcel as opposed to the address and things like that, so.
I think the last time this happened with the Ross Valley Sanitary District, they, to their credit, had put something on their website saying, this is a recommended format for you to.
Yeah, I don't think the Water District has done that.
Okay, great, thank you.
But in any event, that answers my question, because I think a protest is a simple matter and doesn't require you to do the detailed analysis that you don't really have the opportunity to do.
We don't. I just wanted to disclose, and that's one of the reasons there's no staff recommendation, we just don't have the ability to give you an analytical assessment of the, this is more you as policymakers, how you feel about this.
Great, okay. Any other comments or questions? I see none. I'll go out to the public. Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this issue? I see none, I'll bring it back. So how do we want to direct our staff? Any do it.
I would encourage providing staff with direction to file a protest in order to get on record that we've done that, because they, the way this works, as I understand it, it's kind of a mathematical thing, and that if there is a majority of customers that file a protest, then the proposed increase cannot be adopted, but if they don't get a majority of property owners filing a protest, they can just go ahead and do it. So to, to, you know, to have the district respond to some of the concerns that have been addressed in this forum and elsewhere, I think it would be in the interest of the public to at least attempt to marshal the majority number for protests. I don't know whether we'll be able to do that or not, but I think it's worth a shot.
They do have on their website how to protest the proposed rate increase, and it does, it tells you what it must contain, so if you want to look that up, it's there.
Right, but there's, as we said, it's, there's not a lot. You can do it, you can do it in like two sentences.
Four points.
But we're going to add to it, it sounds like.
I, I would just be filing a vote of protest for the properties. I wouldn't make any additional comment.
I concur with Councilmember Holmes.
Okay, great. So that's a motion, Kevin?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to, to file a protest.
Okay, Dan, is that a second?
It's a second.
Great, all in favor? Aye. Anyone oppose? I see none.
And I would just note, we've done this before. This has been our approach for pass, and in fact, on June 5th, the Sewer District will be talking to you about their increase in the 218 process, and we'll be asking you for the same, the same question on that one.
And a similar approach would work in that context as well.
All right, with that, thank you. We will adjourn our city council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.